news and Tribune. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice and all for all.
Okay, roll call, Janice.
Mr. Zangara, Mr. Malanson.
Here.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Here.
Ms. Malone.
Here.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Here.
Mr. Vigna.
Here.
Ms. Vito.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Ms. DeCandia.
Here.
Okay, general announcement, no new testimony will be heard after 10:00 PM. Everyone should have a copy of the minutes from April 8th. If there's no problems with it, motion that be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's no memorializations, we'll move on to a new application.
Do we have to do all in favor?
That's it.
Do you have to do it all in favor, right? We had a second.
All in favor of the minutes?
Yeah.
Is everybody in favor of the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone's in favor of the minutes? All right, new application, Kaplan Hidden Lake Town Center, 245 Town Center Drive, site plan permitted accessory use. Okay, is the applicant ready? Okay, Mr. Kaplan.
We are. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Brett Kaplan, on behalf of the applicant, Hidden Lake Town Center LLC, one of the Kaplan Companies. Briefly, by way of background.
Sorry?
Is this on? It's green.
Yeah, I hear you.
We're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for 25 garage units to support the tenants of Hidden Lake Town Center and surrounding residences. The subject property is known as Block 4.05, Lot 122.02, in the PUD zoning district. The property contains about 5.3 acres, located off of Willowbrook Drive, and it presently contains the Hidden Lake Town Center retail. This is the commercial portion of the planned unit development area. I have three witnesses tonight. To my right will be our first witness, Chris Saleh, who's a project civil engineer. The second witness will be Rick Perez, the project architect. I also have Michael Sebula here, the director of Kaplan's Commercial Division, to discuss any operational questions, how we're going to lease the garage units if approved, et cetera. I provided the affidavit of service and publication to the board secretary. I'd ask that Janice confirm that everything is in order, and we could have our first witness sworn in and move ahead.
Are the notices in order?
Yes, this is in order. May I share the following with the board members?
Yeah, this is Tom Malika. I did examine the form and content of the vote, as did Mr. Parkin. Everything is in order. It is acceptable and important. Does have the requisite jurisdiction to hear this application.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move forward with our first witness.
Should we have him sworn in?
Yeah, sworn in, yes.
Just state your full name for the record, and we'll have you sworn in.
Yes, my name is Christopher Saleh, last name is S's in Sam's, Z's in zebra, A-L-A-Y.
And our attorney could swear him in?
Yeah, could you raise your right hand, please, sir? Do you swear firm that any testimony you may give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay.
After you can, uh, file your witness's identity, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Just give us his qualification.
Sure, sure. Because we just state, go ahead, state your professional education.
I currently work at Menlo Engineering Associates located at 261 Cleveland Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey. Receive a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Rhode Island in 2008, and I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 2013, and have testified in front of multiple boards throughout the state. I don't think I've been to New Brunswick, North Brunswick before, but have multiple boards throughout Middlesex County, Hudson County, Somerset County, Mercer County.
Okay, well, welcome to North Brunswick. We'll accept you as an expert, thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris, your licenses are current?
Yes, and in good standing.
Great. And did you prepare or oversee the plans which are before the board this evening?
Yes, I have.
Did you review the PUD zone district regulations and the North Brunswick developer regulations as part of your preparation?
Yes, I have.
Did you visit the property?
Yes.
Fantastic. Mr. Chairman, we've premarked an aerial as exhibit A1 with today's date, 5/13/25. It's identified Hidden Lake Storage, Block 4.05, Lot 122.02. Chris, if you wouldn't mind, please walk the board and the public through the property and the surrounding uses utilizing A1.
Yes, so A1 is entitled the existing conditions exhibit dated today. So the property is designated as Block 4.05, Lot 122.02, as shown on the tax map of North Brunswick. Overall, the property is approximately 5.53 acres and is located entirely within the PUD district. Surrounding the property is entirely multifamily residential, with the property being commercial use. The property is currently developed, it has three two-story commercial buildings and a one-story garage use. The buildings are centrally located on the site. There is a paved patio area at the center of the three buildings, and sidewalk interconnecting the buildings to the street sidewalk. There's 211 existing parking spaces within the parking area along the north and east sides of the buildings, and there's multiple access points along Willowbrook Drive and Pembroke Avenue to the south. The remainder of the property is mostly lawn and landscape area along the perimeters of the site. There's also an existing fenced-in playground that was formerly in accessory use with a former tenant, which was a daycare facility on site.
Can you point, excuse me, can you point that out on the map?
The playground?
The buildings and the pavement are all the same color, Craig, so if you could, as you're talking about things, as you could point out so we can follow along with you?
Sure, so, and describing this a little bit, this is an aerial exhibit, just taken on offline of the existing conditions of the site and the surrounding areas, and the property boundary is highlighted in white. So the three two-story commercial buildings I previously described located at the center of the site are located towards the northwest, so, and for the purposes of my description, north is to the left side of this exhibit. So, to the northwest portion of the site, the three buildings are located there, pointing on the aerial. The patio is in the center of those three buildings, and then there're sidewalks along the perimeter of the buildings leading out to the street. The 211 parking spaces associated along the south and east side of the buildings are here in an L shape with access to Pembroke Avenue to the south, and access to Willowbrook Avenue in two locations to the north and west of the property. Again, there's landscape and open space along the perimeter of the site, and the fenced-in playground I mentioned is on the south corner of the site on the west side of Pembroke Avenue access point. Also, point of mention, there's an existing drive-through lane off of what we labeled on the site plans as Building A, it's the westernmost building. There's an existing drive-through that was part of a former tenant, also was formerly a bank, that's no longer in use. There's actually bollards that are blocking off the drive-through, so it's not in use right now, and there's a bypass lane with a landscaped island in that location as well. Both the playground and that drive-through lane are, you know, are focal points because that's where we're seeking our approval for improvements to the site. Which will bring me to exhibit A2, and this is already labeled A2, also entitled Hidden Lake Storage, overall plan exhibit dated today. And what this exhibit is, is the same aerial background with the property boundary highlighted and the proposed site improvements rendered and colorized onto this exhibit. This is essentially the overall plan rendered onto the aerial, and this is what was submitted to the township with the zoning table and the landscaping shown on this plan.
And the garages are the beige, what looks like a beige coloring here?
Yes, so the garage is the beige color, and then they're in two locations, and then there's a hatched pattern here, which are the, essentially the loading areas for those garages.
And Chris, just before you get into the testimony of what we're proposing to get approved this evening, I don't think you identified what the date is on exhibit A2.
Right, also dated today, 5/13/25.
So why don't you just jump in and walk the board and the public through what we're proposing, number of units, locations, et cetera.
Yes, so we're seeking approval tonight from the planning board to construct two separate garage storage buildings totaling 25 storage units, and it's intended for use for the, for existing or future tenants of this commercial property, the town center, or residents within the Hidden Lake community, not for outside public rent and use of these garage units. So again, there's two buildings proposed. The first building I'll talk about is this V-shaped building. It's 4,210 square feet and contains 18 10-by-20 garage units, and then there's one oversized unit which is at the corner of the V, which is 20 by 30 in dimension. Now, this is located where the former, or currently where the fenced-in playground is located. The playground will be demoed for the construction of this garage storage unit. Four parking spaces will be removed in order to access this garage. There's a one-way drive and loading area along this garage unit. It's 18 feet wide, so two spaces, two nine-foot wide spaces will be removed at the ingress point, which is the westernmost ingress point, and then two spaces at the egress of that loading area, which is to the eastern end of the V-shaped building. We do have an architect here, we'll go into the decorative features and the architecturals, but the garage is 12 feet in height and will match the existing, you know, architecture of the site. The second building that we're proposing is 1,800 square feet. It contains six 30 by 10 garage units. It'll be connected essentially to Building A where that drive-through lane is currently located, that drive-through canopy and the pavement and landscape island will be removed, and that garage unit will be constructed with the back of it up against the existing building, so it actually looks like an extension of the building that's currently there. It'll look like a garage when you're looking at it from the internal drive aisles. Really, the circulation of the site, the existing pavement, other than removing those four parking spaces, all the internal movements and maneuvering of the site will not be impacted whatsoever. The access points to the site and the internal driveways of the parking area are not impacted whatsoever. All of the loading is off of the drive aisles. In front of this building specifically, that gored striped loading aisle will be 13 feet wide, again, off of the drive aisle, so any U-hauls, small cars or SUVs that pull up and unload and load into those units will be able to pull out of the way, so there's not blocking the drive aisles, creating any safety concerns. We ran a truck movement for an SU-30 box truck. That's the largest that we could have maneuver through the V-shaped building and loading area. That's larger than an ambulance, so emergency vehicles could get back there if needed, but these are not large units. Again, they're the size of a, the 10-by-20 units are the size of a parking space or a large parking space such as a Costco space, so these are not large units where we expect big trucks or a lot of traffic to be going back and forth to these units. They're simply supporting the existing uses of the site, which are multifamily apartments, townhomes, and supporting the existing commercial spaces. As we all know, storage is at a premium at our homes everywhere, so additional storage always comes in handy, and these units are specifically there to support the residents and the tenants of Hidden Lake.
Chris, if you wouldn't mind discussing utilities, stormwater, and landscaping for the proposed garage units.
Yes, so this is not a major development, we're not disturbing over an acre of area, we're not increasing impervious coverage by more than a quarter acre, so we're not triggering the stormwater rules, but we will be addressing stormwater. The roof runoff will be conveyed to the existing drainage system on site, either over land as there's a slope towards the parking area where the drainage is, or by roof leaders that'll convey runoff underground from the roof into the existing drainage system. There's no proposed new utilities such as sewer and gas. The only utility proposed for the storage units is for electric, and that's so that there can be a light within the units, so, you know, for obvious reasons, for visibility within the units. But there's no other utilities proposed for the site, so we'll provide some stormwater calculations to show how. We will address the roof runoff, which is a slight increase in impervious coverage, but other than that, there's no other utility improvements or infrastructure improvements for these garage storage spaces. There's no proposed There's no proposed variances for these improvements. We are providing some additional lighting and landscape to help buffer the garage. So actually, there's an existing hill kind of where the existing playground is, so the garages will be sunken in a little bit along the back, so that actually softens the appearance of these garages. Even though they're only 12 feet high, the back will actually be buried a little bit, so they even appear a little bit less from the adjacent residential uses.
How many feet is that? You're saying it's sunken, it's?
Just one or two feet. It's not sunken in a lot, but it's sunken in, you know, a little bit, just mentioning it that we'll, because of that hill back there, that it's impacting the grading around the back of the prop, the back of the building.
And what landscaping we're proposing as part of the site plan approval this evening?
So we're proposing 43 evergreens, and that, those are located along the southern portion of the property where the V-shaped building is closest to the adjacent residential uses. They're double-row evergreen trees. They'll provide a nice buffer from the apartments or from the residences to the garage units. We'll work with professionals on what type of evergreens work best. You know, I understand that there's some current concerns as far as deer-eating arborvitae, which is what we're proposing, so we'll work with professionals, and we'll recommend different types of trees to diversify all the arborvitae and to put in plant material that's less likely to be devoured. And in addition to the landscape, we're providing one shade tree in the landscaped area within the V-shaped building. That's to remain, and that's to meet the tree replacement requirements of the ordinance. Since we are removing seven existing trees, we're required to replace the seven.
I'm sorry, you're removing what?
Seven existing trees to, for these improvements. And per the ordinance, we're required to replace those seven trees with one new tree, so the shade tree at the center there satisfies that requirement. But we'll work, again, to diversify the buffer, to provide some additional shade trees to satisfy the township professionals.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood. Based on our tree removal ordinance, given the size of the trees you're taking out, you only need to replace?
Plant one new tree.
One new deciduous tree.
Right, and we're providing that one new tree plus the 43 additional evergreens.
Yeah, you're right. The others are for landscaping, not to meet the requirements of our ordinance. Okay.
Correct.
So can I ask a question, please? With the additional shrubs and trees that you're putting in, aside from that one tree, does that, is that equivalent to or more than what you're taking out?
Yes, we're taking out seven trees. We're planting 44 trees. So much more than the shrubs. We're planting 31 additional shrubs to kind of enhance the foundation where the second building, the 30-by-10 units are that are connected to the existing building. We're providing shrubs on either side to make it look nice. And again, we're going to supplement these plantings and provide additional foundation plantings along the V-shaped building as suggested and requested by the township engineer. And then in regards to lighting, we're providing four wall packs on the V-shaped building to light.
Four what?
Wall packs, wall-mounted lights, to light the new loading area along that V-shaped building. There are LED fixtures. Again, they'll be lighting inside the units, and then the 1,800-square-foot building, Jason's Building A, that's actually within the existing lit area from the parking lot light fixtures, so we're not proposing any new lighting in that area. We'll confirm that all existing light fixtures are working on site, and if there's any that are out or not working, we'll make sure they get replaced. But other than that, we're not proposing any new, any new lighting in that area, as it should be lit sufficiently.
So, go ahead, Tom. All that lighting is on the inside of the V? Like, I'm just curious about where it's going to overflow into the residential?
Correct. It's not pointing towards the residence at all. It's pointing down just to light that loading area. And again, the, those structures, the garages are only 12 feet high, so they're not tall that you'll see. The lighting within the parking lot is, will be seen more than the new fixtures that are being proposed.
And how far is the property line to the nearest residential residences?
At the closest point, it's 50 feet. At the V, it's 69 feet, so it kind of tapers away from the residences from that closest point, but it meets all required setbacks for these accessory structures.
And in regard to lighting on the interior units, can you explain to the board what we're proposing inside the units?
Inside the units will just be, you know, single LED light fixtures that just light those garages. And again, they're pointing towards the interior of the commercial property, so they won't be seen at all from the residences behind these garage units.
So I didn't try, and those would be on some sort of motion detector?
Yes, yes, they'll be on motion detectors, and we do intend to have timers on the wall fixtures so that at night, after dark, those lights will dim so that they're not lit upright at night.
Can you explain a little bit more about the lighting for the outside? You said that there were four wall-mounted fixtures? Is that enough that's going to illuminate that?
Yes, we put the plan together and those, you know, again, this is not a super-large building, so the wall, the wall fixtures will light the entire loading area that's in front of the building.
It's just for the building, not the drive? So if someone can come at night, they'd be able to, be able to have enough illumination to utilize and?
Yes, it essentially lights up the loading area only and not the rest of the site.
Okay, and those aren't not on a dimmer or anything like that?
They'll be on a timer and a dimmer. So at nighttime, they'll dim down, so.
And so they're motion, sort of motion activated? Okay.
Correct.
Excuse me, the V-shaped question was, are the lights all on the inside of the V? There are no lights on the back of these garages facing the residential units?
Yes, that's correct.
No lights at all on the backside of these garages?
Correct.
Okay.
Chris, as it relates to outside agency approvals, can you identify what outside agency approvals are necessary?
Yes, we'll be submitting to the county, which we intend, expect to receive a letter of no interest. We'll be submitting to soil erosion for limits of disturbance and stability and their review. And that's, that's really it.
If there are no further questions, I'd just like to address, we did receive a few reports, one from Mr. Watson, and I believe two others. I'd like to walk through this witness, the engineering comments with Mr. Watson.
I do have a question.
Is there another question?
I do, I have a question with regard to the loading area in the smaller building. How wide is that area?
It's about 13 feet.
13 feet?
Which is wide enough for a vehicle to kind of parallel park into the, in front of the building to load in.
To parallel park in front, so they wouldn't be able to park?
No.
Straight in, because it looks close to where the existing parking spaces are. What is the distance between that loading area and the existing parking?
Yes, so the, at the edge of the 13 feet, it's the full drive aisle width between that loading area and the spaces, so it's 24 feet, which is the required.
Okay, it's hard for me to see because it looks like it's a little bit further out than the other parking spaces along that same line.
Actually, 25 feet, which I assume is the township requirement.
Thank you.
And just on the same note, on the V-shaped building, is it just, as far as the width of the drive, is it just, if I am a tenant and I have a unit there, is it just that I pull up and, again, parallel in front of whatever storage unit that I am and I offload?
So that loading aisle is actually 18 feet wide?
Okay.
So you could maneuver so that you're more perpendicular to the building? It's 18 feet wide so that we can have a bypass there in case?
Now, is it intent for, if I have a box truck or, I don't know, 18-wheeler, I don't know what size you were looking, is it, is that a truck that's supposed to be able to pull up in, in there?
Not into, no, they're not supposed to pull.
So they would stay in the actual parking, parking lot area and then?
Well, no, they would pull.
How would they?
So they would be able to, we ran a movement for a SU box truck, which is basically a small U-Haul, and they would be able to pull into this loading area. They wouldn't be able to, you know, back into the units or anything.
They would be perpendicular.
But they would be able to be parallel with the building.
Parallel, okay.
If you had, again, just if you pulled up with your car or sedan, you may be able to get more perpendicular, and you, these spaces are 10 by 20, so you could potentially park a vehicle inside as well for storage. If you wanted to, you know, if you had an old classic car and you wanted to keep it inside rather than in the driveway, that's a potential use for these garages.
Okay, thank you.
Do you anticipate any kind of refuse that would require a dumpster or anything like that?
We have an operational, my third witness can answer that. I believe the answer is no, and there are refuse containers on site.
That's the other thing, there's already some there, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So if there are no further questions, we can address Mr. Watson's May 5, 2025 report. Mr. Salaz, did you have an opportunity to review the May 5, 2025 memo from CME Consulting and Municipal Engineers authored by James Watson?
Yes.
I believe the, on page four, number three, Mr. Watson correctly identifies that we have requested several exemptions from the township's standard site plan submission requirements, and I'd like to walk through each one of those and provide the board with some testimony on why we believe those waivers should be granted.
Okay.
Beginning, you can just walk through, the first one is the staging plan. The applicant has not provided a staging plan for the proposed development and is seeking a waiver. Can you address that waiver, please?
Right, I think, you know, what we're looking at is the scale of this project being essentially two storage garages and that the construction will be relatively quick and not, you know, requiring heavy machinery, cranes, things that, we need a lot of storage on site, pipes, that sort of.
I mean, presently, there is no, what's, anybody in those commercial buildings now or they're mostly vacant?
No, no, they're fully.
So how much usage is there of the parking lot? What I'm getting at is I'm sure there is material to be stored. You could probably store it somewhere in the parking lot, am I right?
Exactly, we'll store it in the parking lot. I believe what Jason Kaplan said, he could testify, but I believe what we're going to start with is begin construction with the smaller building before we build the big V building that people have been talking about. Make sure that it rents quickly, there's a market, and then move forward with the larger building. Again, from a staging plan, we're going to utilize, you know, the area for the V building to store some material to the extent we have to for the smaller building and move forward with construction.
Okay, that's fine.
The second comment is for a stormwater report, and again, we're not triggering the stormwater management rules, but we will provide some calculations and a stormwater statement. So, you know, whether a full waiver is required from that, we needed it to move forward, but we'll provide some calculations to address that. The NJDEPLOI, again, the area that we're disturbing, one, the smaller buildings within the existing parking area, the larger V-shaped building is where the playground is located. It's lawn space and it's a, it's a large hill, so there's no indications that there are wetlands there. There was a previous site plan recently approved for the age-restricted housing there, and the site plan there did not show any wetlands on that site plan either, so we're comfortable that there's no wetlands on site. As far as the traffic study, again, this is not being marketed to the outside public. It's specifically for existing tenants, so we don't anticipate any major draw to the site or, you know, increase in trips to the site just for these, these storage units. Location of all existing and proposed storm drainage and utility lines. Again, we do have inlets and drainage shown on the plan. We did not locate every utility because frankly, we don't, we're not providing new utilities. We'll show the electric and we'll connect the storm as required. So we'll show what is required to complete the design, but it's a, it's a minor, minor plan. And then dearest, distance to nearest intersection, we don't have that on the plan, but I think that's simple enough that we can add that to the plan to address that waiver. Zoning and school district boundaries within 200 feet. We can add the zoning boundaries. I think that's, that's simple enough. We're entirely within the PUD district and, but we seek the waiver for that to move forward with the application.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you just said.
So we can add the zone boundary. I know the boundary is just along that southern property line for the PUD district, and I think we can add the school district boundaries as well, so I don't believe that we need that waiver. We can, we can address that on the revised site plans as part of the condition of the approval. And then a current property survey, we are working off the site plan that was previously approved, so we didn't get a current survey, but that site plan worked, was working off of an older survey, and in comparing the, the plan with the existing conditions of the site, it's consistent with what's out there, so we ask for a waiver for, for getting a whole new survey for this application.
Moving through, section three is identified as site plan comments. I think you've addressed most of them in your direct testimony, but number two requests that, I guess it raises a question whether this, whether the western storage building falls within the residential, the commercial portion of the PUD development zone, and if it's located within the resident, residential area, the applicant must demonstrate that the minimum requirement of 15% common open space is still being satisfied.
So I didn't personally find a map that indicated commercial versus residential. This entire lot is commercial, so in my mind, we fall within the commercial area and it's not required. However, if it's determined that we're within the residential portion of the PUD, if that exists, then we do have more than that 15% open space, so either way, we would comply
All the other comments in Mr. Watson's report, you can work with him to address. I believe specifically there were some comments about landscaping and stormwater calculations. We can comply and get him the information he's needed.
Yes, we'll work with professionals to satisfy their comments.
There was a request for a grading plan. We could submit that as well.
Yes.
Various comments about landscaping and providing, I guess, some different species of trees, we can comply with that.
Yes.
Mr. Watson, I think other than the comments that Chris just identified, that he addressed all other engineering comments in your letter in his direct testimony. There are some questions that'll be addressed next from the architect, but to the extent we missed anything, please, you know, let us know, we can certainly address it.
So the architect will address the waste disposable?
Mike Sabula, who will address operations, our third witness, he can address the waste removal. We can, we can, I'll address that. Right now, we're not proposing any signage, again, to bring in the traveling public. I think what we were proposing to do is just put numbers on the units, 1 through 25, just so from a leasing perspective, we got to, there was an emergency, that the fire, the police, the emergency personnel will know what unit it is, and then the tenants that rent the units will be able to identify which unit is theirs, so when they go there, they could put the padlock on their unit and obviously store whatever they need to in unit 1, 2, whatever the case may be.
Do you want to offer testimony about your previous approval at this point?
Sure, well, again, I guess I can address that, whether it's testimony. We were, we did seek, we did obtain, I obtained an approval, probably about 10 years now, I think it was actually 2015, to convert the three buildings from the retail to age-restricted. Mike has done a fantastic job, and right now, the, the space is, I think, 100% occupied, so at this point, we have no intent of moving forward with the, the age-restricted use. We want to continue it as the retail, utilize the other space for the garages, and candidly, if we were to come back 10 more years and the garages are built and the retail market changes, I think it can move forward with the V-shaped building. The smaller building, the six units would have to be modified and removed, but I think it can operate more or less the same way it's operating as shown on the site plan now. But right now, as we sit here today in 2025, we don't intend to move forward with the age-restricted.
Are you providing a site certification plan in the question?
Yes.
Can we talk more about landscaping, Jim? You know, because I know there was some discussion about there being arborvitae, and within several hundred feet of my house in both directions is five homes that, where arborvitae have been stripped four and a half, five feet high, and they look ridiculous.
Sure.
So I don't know, they show, I don't know if that's a particular type of? So I don't know, they show, I don't know if that's a particular type of arborvitae, Jim, but they've got, they've got a staggered row of arborvitae that are great, they're great screen, they're 15, 20, they're great screen if they're not eaten, but if this area is, you know, is, I think you mentioned at the workshop that this, that the deer roam this area regularly.
We'll have to work with them and our landscape architects to come up with questions like that.
Yeah, I think the applicant stated that they would work with.
Absolutely, sure, we'll figure it out with CME's landscape architect. We could agree to a condition.
If any approval was granted, I mean, they would, you would absolutely have to satisfy their landscaping team.
Understand.
Plan, okay.
And that's a comment in the letter. And did you provide a grading plan and storm drainage accounts and statements that we asked for down in the application, so some additional foundation planning, I think we talked about, are there any you'd agree to add?
Yes.
Did you have a lighting, did you have a lighting plan that you prepared?
Yes, that was just the four-wall mounted fixtures on the V-shaped building.
And did that, did that provide any lighting levels?
Yes, the photometrics for that.
So I think that addresses, that addresses my comments.
Jim, you're okay with the waivers that he referenced at the beginning?
Yes, yes, I mean, the few things, there are pieces of those waivers where we ask for additional information that they've agreed to provide.
To provide, yeah, okay.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, okay. All right, we're ready for your next witness.
You open it to the public, the justice witness, or?
Well, we generally open up to public at the end, yeah.
Fantastic. Rick, what's your?
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
State your name and spell your name, please.
Name is Ricardo Perez, managing partner Perez and Dossi Architects.
Okay, if our attorney could swear him in, please.
Yes, do you swear for any testimony? You may give in this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Would you provide your educational professional background for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, my license is in good standings, I'm a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology School of Architecture in 1992, 93-ish, licensed since 1995, I've been managing architectural firms ever since. And I've testified before dozens and dozens of boards throughout the state, first time in North Brunswick. I got the other Brunswick's covered though. I got the perfecta, the trifecta.
You got the trifecta.
Whatever that is.
All right, we're good.
Okay.
Your license is current, in good standing as a professional architect?
Yes. Okay.
We pre-marked a few exhibits here, I guess we haven't pre-marked.
Well, I've been pre-marked, yeah.
Why don't you? Would you describe them for the board with today's date and what each one is identified by the title law?
Yes. First exhibit I'm looking at here is the V-shaped, well, we're calling the V-shaped building tonight, it's my drawing SK1, it is dated to 1925, and it's, it's a typical floor plan of the existing storage units that we've been discussing today. We talked about having 18 10 by 20 units and one 20 by 30 unit in the corner, simply because we can only get one door, that unit gets bigger. This is the V-shaped building we're talking about, the retaining wall that Chris was talking about earlier, I believe it's about in this corner somewhere, this part of the building here would actually be a retaining wall to hold the earth back because its amount will be here, so the building is going to seem shorter. My other exhibit here is the facades, this is exhibit A4, it's my drawing SK2, this is showing the facades of the V-shaped building, it is also dated to 1925, be presented today on 5/13/25. As I say, it represents the elevations of the building of the V, try to get out of everyone's way as best I can, you can see the garage doors on the west elevation, they're basically residential-sized doors, they're not oversized, they're small doors, the building itself, the height to the mean of the building is about 12 and a half feet at the worst case, it's, you can see how the ground tapers up here, and this would be, I'm pointing towards the south elevation on my drawing SK2, you can see how the ground tapers upward, so the building is going to be even shorter over here, not much higher than a shed on this corner of the property, and you can see how, on the other side, on the east elevation, that same corner, the grade tapers up, and that's the existing landscaping. So this, the architecture of the outside of the building is matching exactly what's on site, we're going to have fiberglass cap salt shingles, we're going to have horizontal siding of the same color, and we're going to have stone veneer with a concrete cap, which is exactly what's on the existing buildings across the street, so we match, we're looking to match this to give it the campus feel. Anything else of importance here? So per the mean of the roof, which is the local ordinance, the building is only 12 and a half feet high to the mean of the roof, so it's probably about to the height of that ceiling here, the lower ceiling, it's about 12 and a half feet or so, so that's about the height of the mean roof, so it's a relatively small building. That's my A4, I also have an A5 exhibit here, which is the smaller edition, and it's an addition to an existing facility, this one is marked A5 with today's date, it is also my exhibit SK3 dated to 1925. This one is indicating, this is basically an addition to the existing building, we're literally taking this part of the building and stretching it forward to create these storage spaces, there are six of them, they're 10 by 30 each, you can see the garage doors here, and this is the, basically the form of the building that's there, we're literally just pulling it out forward and putting less wall to lower the scale of it, currently the roof is up here, I mean, the wall, I'm sorry, goes up to about this height, I'm pointing at here, so we're going to lower that down some and keep the hip roofs, which are the architecture of all the existing buildings throughout the complex, so the architecture is going to match exactly what's there, same materials in the siding, same stone, same roofing, so it's going to seem, at the end of the day, it becomes always part of this building. The garage doors are the same, residential-sized doors, although the units are bigger, these are meant more for the commercial folks, I believe, and they're 10 by 30. They're wood-framed construction, we'll have a firewall separating these storage units from the rest of the building, there'll be a masonry wall built inside to make this a separated building fire-wise, and that's about it, the roofs are going to be built with roof trusses, just like the existing buildings are built, and all the, it's all wood framing, the buildings are so small, they're all going to be wood framed.
Both buildings, the addition of the V-shaped building will be ADA compliant?
Yes, yes, 5% of the units require ADA compliance, clearly, it's not inside the building because this is a storage facility, it's access towards the building, so the site being flat, for the most part, as it is, it'll, it should easily comply with that 5%.
And these proposed garage units, they do not need to be sprinkler, correct?
They do not require sprinklers, based on how small they are.
So the wall that, the wall that connects to the existing building, that'll be a demising wall that goes all the way up to the roof, all the way through the attic?
Correct, and we'll have fire roofing on each side of that roof to create a separated building for the ICC International Code.
Do these require smoke detectors?
We don't normally do them, there's no occupants, smoke detectors are normally for occupants, to wake up and get out.
And no sprinkler?
No sprinklers, not required in a building of this size. When you get to the bigger ones, taller ones, yes. 12,000 square foot is the cutoff, and we're not any.
I have a question about SK2.
Yes.
So we have a mean roof height.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We have a mean roof height of 12 and a half feet, but that does not tell us the highest point, right, where the peak is, which is what?
Highest point, I believe, is about 15, 16 feet.
Okay.
I can confirm that, one moment. Highest point, right there, 15 feet to the peak.
Okay.
Which I believe is the ordinance for a shed as well, 15 feet to the peak.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, because we've been hearing 12 feet all night.
Yeah, 15 feet to the peak in the worst case, it gets better when the site goes up on the other side, it gets less.
I have another question. So since there's no sprinkler, it's just me, since there's no sprinkler, are there pull devices or anything, if so, if something goes on there, then how would?
There's no occupants in the building, yes, it's a garage door opens, it's like your garage door in your home.
So if there's a fire or something that's going in there, you just have to wait?
It's a fire.
You just kind of have to wait till you see it outside?
It's going to have to wait till you see it outside, yes.
Or someone calls.
Or someone calls, yes. Very common for these small buildings, and all small buildings, technically.
They should have it.
I understand that the planning board members.
That's a good concern.
It's a good, is it code compliant?
Code-wise, it's fine, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And as far, and God forbid there is an emergency, these will be, as I discussed earlier, each garage will be numbered, so God forbid there is a fire, somebody calls it in, the fire, police, ambulance, they'll know.
I'm sorry, did you say there are firewalls between each unit?
No.
Okay.
Just between.
Can you bring back your exhibit?
Yeah, on SK3, right.
A5?
A5, my exhibit A5 shows a masonry wall between the existing construction and the new construction. I think that answered all questions, there's a couple, on one of the comments?
I have no more questions for this witness, and I believe you've already addressed the comments that were identified in the CME May 5 report.
I just have another question. For these garages, it's, everything's manual, correct, and with locks? So they have a padlock that will go on and sort of like?
Cycle, most storage units are the same.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anybody have, any more questions? Witness, no? Okay, okay, we can move on to the next witness.
Before we go on to the last witness, I do want to identify that we did receive two other reports, one from Stephen Boyad, Sewer and Stormwater Review, he has some generic comments, but I don't think anything that needs to be addressed by the applicant. He identifies, I see there is a minimal increase in impervious, I can't read it next, ground, the impact for runoff should be minimal, just my notes, thank you. So, agreed. Then, we received a Environmental Commission report dated May 6, 2025, which has a few comments, and the one I think I'll address is the request that we install solar panels on the roof, and again, we looked at that, and unfortunately, based on a cost-benefit analysis, it really doesn't make sense, there's going to be very little electric use here on each of the units, and just the cost of putting those on top of the building is just prohibitive when there's really not much bang for the buck.
I got you.
Mike, one's?
Okay. Okay, if you can state your name and spell it, please.
Sure, Michael, last name is Sebula, spelled C-E-B-U-L-A.
Okay, our attorney, please swear him in.
Michael, do you swear for any testimony that you may give in this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Mike, very briefly, why don't you just tell the board what your position is with Kaplan and a little bit about what you do with Kaplan?
Sure, so I am Vice President of Acquisitions and I oversee commercial asset management. I have been tasked with leasing Hidden Lake Town Center over the past couple of years, and have taken the occupancy in Hidden Lake from about 30% to about 95%, so we've had a significant increase in interest and tenant mix, and obviously, ownership is looking to enhance the value and the productivity of the site, and so that's what prompted Kaplan Companies to make this decision and add these storage units as the request of some of the tenants and folks that have been visiting the Hidden Lake Town Center.
Okay.
You just, you touched on it, who will these, assuming it's approved, who will these garages be marketed to?
I mean, primarily, it'll be for the occupants, the businesses of Hidden Lake Town Center. If there are other units that have not been rented that are available, we can make them available to residents of the local community. I also oversee three extra-space storage facilities for Kaplan Companies, which are your typical large-scale self-storage facilities, this is not what we're proposing here at Hidden Lake Town Center, these are just basically small garages for the local community, we're not marketing these to outside people, and it's really based for just to serve the immediate vicinity.
And the commercial tenants will be the first, the first crack at it?
Yes, we've had three or four, five folks who have expressed interest, they haven't signed that they're ready to sign a lease, the leases will be 12-month leases, so we're not looking for these to be a 30-day lease or have a lot of turnover or attract transient people that are just looking to come in and get out, so we're looking for a commitment of a 12-month period.
I got you.
From a security perspective, how often are you or somebody from Kaplan on the property supervising what's going on to make sure that everything is code compliant, no one's breaking the laws or the rules, et cetera?
So I'm onsite at least three times a week myself, and we have several maintenance supervisors who oversee the Hidden Lake community who are also there every day, so there's someone there, and we also have cameras that we recently upgraded and installed throughout the property, so we're monitoring the entire property via cameras that I could see on my phone.
Okay.
And everybody that leases one of these will be subject to a written lease, which will identify that they've got to comply with any and all applicable rules and regulations of the township, and to the extent they don't, you're evicted.
Correct.
Okay, going back, as mentioned a couple times about the refuse, so let's just touch on.
Oh, sure, so typically, you know, we don't provide refuse for garage storage units, however, onsite, we have four dumpsters in our dumpster area, of which, in the event that there is refuse that is outside, our maintenance people will collect that refuse and dispose of it properly in the existing dumpsters.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be the main concern, that, you know, if somebody moves out and leaves a bunch of moving boxes laying there.
Right.
Residents don't want to be looking at that, so.
Unfortunately, it becomes our.
It becomes your problem, but, I got you.
There are ample dumpsters onsite that that won't really be an issue.
Yeah, we have two recycled dumpsters and two other just regular, general dumpsters.
Okay, okay.
No further questions for Mr. Sebula?
I do have a few questions, actually, so the tenants that are in the three buildings now, what percentage is that? What percentage is your building filled with tenants, leasing tenants, businesses?
Oh, we right currently have, let's say, we have about 2,600 square feet that is vacant as a total, which is, you know, 4%, so we're about 96% occupied currently.
And of those businesses, a few of them have been there for a number of years, correct?
Yes.
And in that time, they haven't needed a storage facility, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the ones that do need a storage facility, are those that you said have mentioned to you that they are requesting something, are those the most recent tenants that have moved in, such as the dog grooming or the hair salon, are they looking for storage?
Some of the, obviously, the newer tenants are looking for storage, but we do have one of the older tenants who is also looking for, he's a large office tenant who's upstairs, who has a lot of boxed documents that he has to store for his business, so he wants to potentially use one of the spaces for that, so.
And also, some, addressing that question, now that we are 96% occupied, we had some of the tenants who were utilizing the empty spaces for storage, so obviously, we had to stop that, and now that it's 96% occupied, they're looking for another avenue to?
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I know there's some that have been there for quite a while and, you know, didn't seem to need storage, but as you're saying, if they, if they're losing space.
Well, yeah, I think they were illegally utilizing space that wasn't theirs, and now that it's occupied by another tenant, they're stuck, and I guess they're not going paperless.
You also mentioned at one point, I think it was you, Mr. Kaplan, that said that there are a number of residents who have also expressed interest in having storage, residents of Hidden Lake, were you referring to the business tenants, or were you referring to the homeowners that are in that area?
Okay, if I said that, I don't think I said that, but I was referring to the tenants of the retail center, but tonight, in talking to a few of the people in the crowd, we even got some people from the neighborhood that were interested in utilizing space.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Okay, yeah, no, I. I hope I clarified that.
Thank you.
I just have a question, so I know you said that you were doing businesses, and I'm just curious about, like, I know there's office businesses and people who run that, but are you looking to do like restaurants as well, because I know that there's some restaurants that are in there, would they be utilizing the storage unit as well too? Would they be utilizing the storage unit as well, too?
Well, I know that the pizza, Sal's Pizza, has expressed that he needs space to store a lot of his, you know, backstock, you know, like the sodas and the pizza boxes, you know, takes up space. So he expressed interest to utilize one of the spaces.
And are there, I mean, do you have, like, rules as far as what they can store in here? You know, that they're not storing any hazardous?
Yeah, exactly. No explosive hazardous.
Especially with restaurants, you have all types of stuff that they use, so I'm just curious to find out.
Yeah, there is a whole list.
I will craft a lease that everybody will sign that will prevent them from storing hazardous material in the units.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Done with that witness.
We can sit here, because I know we're getting some questions from the public.
Oh, sure.
Is that it, Mr. Kaplan, for witnesses?
Chairman, that's all we have.
Okay. All right. Well, then we're going to open this to the public. Can you get a motion?
I move that we open the meeting to the public.
Second.
Okay. If anybody would like to be heard on this application, come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and spell it. Are we swearing them in?
Hi, good evening.
Chairman.
Yes.
Sometimes questions turn into statements, and my practice to swearing members of the public, just in case that happens.
Okay. Well, that's.
That's why the record is not compromised.
I understand.
Okay. Can you have the members of the public raise their right hand, please?
Ma'am?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. She's ready.
Can you state her name? Yes, Gwen O'Donnell.
Spell your last name, please.
O apostrophe D O N N E L L.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. So I live at 260 Willbrook Drive. It's the condo units directly behind the V-shaped unit.
Mm-hmm.
So it's going to be about 50 feet from the building. One of my concerns is that if you walk that grass between our condo unit and the town center, it is wet. I mean, depending, it can be just wet enough that it wets your shoes, or it can be up to your ankles. I was a little concerned that a waiver was being requested from a letter of interpretation from the N J D P, which regards wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
I know that wherever there's water, you can find wetland vegetation, or you can have hydroric soils. I'm also concerned with that water, with the regrading of the property, that that water does not get angled back to the building, like our building. So those are my concerns, and I would, if that could be addressed, I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I believe Mr. Kaplan stated, as we know, people that were on the board before, that we approved that previous application for the age restricted, and was the wetlands issue addressed at that application?
I believe it was. I believe we provided a presence absence letter, and we based the survey from that approval based on that, and there was no wetlands indicated on that.
Right. And I, and I don't imagine in the 10 years, I don't even know if it was 10 years, but I don't believe any, there's been any major changes in the environment in those 10 years. But as far as your drainage issues, can we address?
We can provide a drainage plan and calculations to the board engineer, which will confirm that it's being drained properly, and it's not going to flood any adjacent residential uses.
Right. And you were going to provide that for his approval?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, our engineer, he will work with our engineer to make sure that the drainage issues are addressed, and there's no runoff that you have to deal with. Whether the ground's still going to be soggy after that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, but I'm more concerned with it coming back and affecting our basements.
I get you. I get you. Yeah.
The drainage calculations you have done, there's nothing, there's nothing flowing to the adjacent properties off-site.
I should, I'll let the engineer address that. Chris, you're still under oath.
So the area between where the playground is and the building is off-site, there is actually a drainage swell in that area, which is why it would be wet, because the drainage is, you know, where the playground is, it's a high point, it's a mound. So runoff is draining to that swell, which leads to the south off-site, to a larger swell. So it makes sense that it's wet, because that's.
Part of the drain, it's part of the drainage design.
The stormwater design is to run the water between our site and the building to convey runoff off-site.
But it's.
So that design is not changing. We're not impacting the amount of runoff going through that swell. It's, you know, essentially, the back of the building is meeting existing grade, and then the front of the building drains towards the apartment line. So there's no additional runoff being generated in that swell.
So it shouldn't affect this property owner, there's nothing going to be redirected in her direction?
Correct. Right, and any roof runoff will be conveyed to the, you know, the existing drainage system.
And it'll continue to be wet, because you, by design, that's where the stormwater goes, and then it runs into swell into your larger drainage system.
Right.
So I think that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Come on up, ma'am.
Can we have the member of the public please state his name for the record?
Patricia Morton, M O R T O N.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have two, two simple things. One, I talked to them before, and I think they're open to it. They said in the leases, there are already exemptions, they are not allowed to have any hazardous things. I would ask that they add that e-bikes and e-lithium batteries and e-scooters not be able to be stored in there, if they would just include that into their exemption, you know, the things that can't be in there.
Mr. Kaplan, that sound reasonable?
It does.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, I appreciate you very much not putting lights on the back of that building. However, I live in that same building, so that's my backyard.
I got you.
And right now, the parking lot puts enough light in there that it's safe there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm concerned that if it's totally dark, there are windows all along the, on the front level, which will now be behind trees, that some, maybe at the ends of the buildings, you could include lights or something, so that's, there's still some light in there, because I use that back door. And if it's pitch black there.
So you get light spills over now?
Well, the parking lot.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So the parking lot lights provide you some light.
Oh, yes. It's perfectly safe, and, you know, that little pizza place has been robbed.
Right.
So to have that area there.
And you're concerned that.
Totally black, and protected from view on one side.
Okay.
So maybe just some kind of lighting at the end of the building, as long as there, just enough to keep it so that it's not tempting for people to, because I cut across there. And I'll agree, by the way, that it's very wet there.
See, wait, do you mind me just? I'm in this building here, so right, there's maybe a light here, or some, just enough to keep that from being pitch black there.
Was that through our light?
Was that?
Was that through our light?
She's saying just the end of the building, so a little bit of light. I just have to make sure.
Look at the parking lot, we're taking a cover of that.
We can't, we can't allow, we can't allow this conversation, John.
Yeah, that's true. Mr. Kaplan? I think we, I think we need to share all this with the public.
Ex parte, ex parte discussions.
So, thank, I think Ms. Morton has requested a light, what's it called, a photo?
Photo cell.
Photo cell light on the corner of the V building to the northwest.
Just enough to keep that from being.
Southwestern corner.
Keep it from being pitch black.
A photo cell light, or a motion activated?
Can I, yeah. Can I just, can I make a, have a question or a comment, I guess? The, the storage building.
We show on that.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
Just enough to keep it not tempting to burglars to go there, to be pitch black, and the windows, all the windows along there are full windows and are ground level.
So I guess my question or comment is, the storage building itself is not that high, right? We said it's 12 and a half, maybe 15 feet at the peaks.
I'm not asking, just enough, yeah.
Hang on, hang on one second.
Right, so the question is, the lighting that's on the existing buildings, that you're saying is shining into the parking lot, that gives you some light in the back of your yard, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that because the parking lot is all lit up.
Yes.
That full grassy area now is enough to make it safe for me to cut across, shop in the shopping mall.
Yeah, I guess my, the question is, is the lighting from the existing building, will that still be seen over the storage, or will it be completely blocked? And also, if we do, like, I, I understand your point where my, if it's too dark back there, but as you said, there's also the residents, all their windows are down there, and they may not be amenable to having light shining, you know, back there.
That's why I was saying, if, just on the end or something, just enough to put a little light back there.
Well, can we get an answer? Maybe you can address the question about the lighting.
I don't need an answer now, I'm asking them to consider that.
I have, I.
Oh, okay.
I can't say with 100% certainty without actually modeling the light design, but yes, I mean, having a 15, you know, tall to 15-foot tall building there will block some of the light that is to the ground back there. So, I mean, I think what's being suggested is kind of at that western end of the building, having maybe an additional wall pack that is either motion censored or on a timer for the end of the storage building, to shine into that grass area and kind of towards that side, would provide some additional ambient light to the back of the building.
I just have a question. If you're putting shrubs, bushes, foliage there, that's going to block it anyway. So even if you put a light on the building, it's still going to be dark, and it's not going to illuminate enough to light up the back of things, so it's not even, what's the point?
Do we want the landscape off, or do we want some?
Well, we.
Yes, if we have the buffer.
We have to keep the buffer, so.
Yeah, so it doesn't make sense to put light there, because it's nothing, it's
still going to be blocked.
The light will light the area kind of between the buffer and the building, there's a large grass area where people are walking, it won't maybe get all the way to the building in the back, but the area between the buffer and the parking area, that's still, there's still an area there that can be lit.
Is there lighting at any other place on the property, like near the, you know, there's a dog park over there, which would kind of be on the side, and maybe lighting that might be over there that would shine behind the storage? I'm not, I.
I think it's too far.
Too far.
I'll show you the nearest, the nearest light is, which I'm sure is what she's referring to, is in this, in the grassed islands within the parking area, and that's, you know, pretty, I think it's actually the middle island, and they're pretty tall, like fixtures, maybe 20 feet, and they're double, there's two heads on them. So that, by casting light into the parking area, I'm sure there's some ambient light that's kind of getting towards the property line over there. It's not, you know, a high level, but I'm sure there's some light. So again, this area off the end of the V-shaped building, if we had a light fixture over there, I think it could light area where likely.
That would be, that would be.
People would be walking to the commercial area.
Yeah.
But again, you're right, it's not going to get through this double landscape.
It's not.
It's not, it's not going to be walking through the landscape buffer anyway, you got to come around that buffer, and the light you just mentioned would probably be the most practical thing to do.
And it's really not, you know, this is an off-site building, it's not our responsibility necessarily to secure the back of the building. It has security issues, it should be.
Yes.
Your landlord's undertaking.
So is that something that you would entertain?
Is that something you would?
I don't feel that's.
Were we able to put in the light on the?
Yeah, on the end, on the end.
On the end.
Yeah, yeah. You might even put something with a little lower wattage, maybe, so it's not so bright, you know?
Fair enough.
I just have, I mean, I get what you're saying as far as the light, but I just worry about it's other people, you know, it's one person wants it, then other people start complaining about the fact that there's all this light that's coming, that, you know, that wasn't there before, and now you have this light on the side of the building. So, I mean, I see it both ways, but I don't want to open up a can of worms, and then you put this there, and then people are coming to the town complaining about why they put this light on the side of this building. So.
Were we able to put something on? I think the chairman's suggesting maybe it's a little lower wattage, and if we get complaints or you get complaints, we'll, we could remove it.
Yeah. We give it a try.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like? Nope? Oh, come on up.
Do I?
Yeah.
Yes.
Your attorney?
Hi, I'm Ginny Keil, and I'm a community member.
Can you spell, can you spell your last name, please?
K E I L.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Do you swear you're going to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
What was your name?
Ginny Keil.
G I N N Y K E I L.
K E I L?
Yes.
Okay.
And, let me just. And I just want to comment on solar panels, that I think you commented that it would use too little electric, so it wasn't really cost-effective. But aren't solar panels something that you can look at long-term that will give you money back eventually? I assume that you will be paying for the electric for these buildings, you know, in some fashion. I'm just wondering why, you know, and can solar panels be added?
The building, the building really does use it. I was an electrician for 45 years, so trust me, for what he's going to use in that building, the cost to install that solar is, is just, you can't recoup it, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, okay, I just.
No, I appreciate it, and I get what you're saying, but, you know, there's some points where it's just not practical.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, the, the electric can be sold off, can't it?
Yeah, but.
Okay, I, it's just that, you know, the more fossil fuels that we use, the worse our environment is. So, you know, putting solar panels on everything is the ideal situation. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Come on up. State your name and spell it, please.
Seriann Grubert Jakubowicz, J A K U B O V I T Z.
Okay, we're going to go back to that, but.
I, I got it. She's my neighbor, I got it.
Mr. Attorney, could we swear her?
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
And if you don't mind spelling that again slowly.
J A K U B O V I T Z.
Okay, I think we got it.
I have to, like, sing my name. Yes, I wanted to know, thank you for all the materials and the boards, but do you have an actual, like, photo of what these garages, sheds will look like?
I don't have an actual photo, but.
Like, what is the aesthetic value it will bring to the community?
One question at a time.
Okay.
If, we built something that's similar, not identical, but similar, at Colony Oaks apartment in North Brunswick.
Finnegan's Land.
Finnegan's Land.
Mm-hmm.
The architecture will be different, because we're designing this to match what's[1731.98] The architecture will be different, because we're designing this to match what's out there now for the retail center, but you'll get the same sort of, you'll get the idea of what we're proposing.
So it will, it will be built out of wood, or...
Yes.
Okay, and it is, and also I wanted to ask, are these, will they be, should they be leased for a certain amount of time?
Yes.
And do you see the, the average number of garages that each tenant that lives, that works there will need? Will people be buying like two, three, four at a time?
Hopefully.
For renting? You're seeing that, it's mostly them, but we only, we have about, what, 15 tenants in the, in Hidden Lake Center right now?
I just want to be clear, we're not selling them, we'll be leasing them for a year lease for 12 months, and there are 25 proposed garage units, and we have how many tenants there?
Currently, we have 16 tenants.
So you see, so then a tenant can own more than one?
Lease more than one.
Lease more than one?
Sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you said that you're going to offer them to the retail tenants, and then residents living within the Hidden Lake area in housing built by Kaplan, whether it's rental or owner occupied, and you have no intention of offering it to anybody outside of Kaplan-built housing? The retail tenants, you have somebody from the outside, somebody who lives on Adams Lane and needs storage can't, isn't coming in. You're just going to offer it to retail tenants and people who have purchased or renting housing built by Kaplan? Is that what you said?
I wouldn't limit it to units built by Kaplan. What I would limit it to is the residential use. First, you're right about the tenants in Hidden Lake. They'll get to get the first bite of the apple. To the extent that we build these and they're not interested, or we rent out 20 and we have five left, we will market it, not generally, but to the people within the Hidden Lake community.
Well, when I said, I was describing the Hidden Lake community as units approved or built by Kaplan, as opposed to units built by someone else in the area on Cousins Lane, or somebody who lives on 27.
Somebody on Better Court wants to do it, and we didn't build Better Court, I'm not going to say.
I don't know what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't think Kaplan built the entire Hidden Lake community, and I don't know, or the majority, but not the whole thing. It predates me. But to the extent it's marketed to somebody in the Hidden Lake community, that Kaplan didn't build that townhouse, because I don't think we built everything.
I thought they did, I thought they did, okay.
But it won't, it will not be marketed to the general public. This is not going out to, like, the extra space storage or the Cube Smarts, where the community or Middlesex County at large will even know this is out there. It won't be marketed to them.
It's for the, the residential vicinity.
Midian vicinity.
Correct. We'll call it that.
Sure.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anyone, anyone else from, did you have something?
No, I guess I, what I would say or ask is that, so if a person that lives on Princess Drive, let's say, across the road, and they see these storage units, and they say, oh, I'm interested in renting one of these, they're not part of the Hidden Lake community, someone else in North Brunswick that lives over here on Herman Road happens to see that these storage units are available, then are you limiting that to people that are closer to the vicinity of the storage units?
Yes, we are.
Or so will you say, sorry, this isn't available for you?
Well, we will say it's not available for you.
To who? I don't understand.
Well, it's, it's, listen, it's the Hidden Lake community, in the vicinity of, you want me to put a mileage restriction on it? But, again...
Yeah.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to...
It's our development, it's development.
Be more specific, so Riverbend.
It's part of Hidden Lake.
It's part of Hidden Lake community. I'm just...
From a practicality standpoint...
I think we have to swear, if you don't testify.
Swear, Jason Kaplan.
Principal, I think you have to be sworn in by the attorney.
Microphone?
Mr. Attorney, we have, we have a bonus with this.
We have another member.
Yes, remember the applicant, principal.
The applicant.
The applicant, yeah. Just state your name and spell.
Jason Kaplan, K-A-P-L-A-N.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the help you got?
I do.
Thank you.
I do. So the intent is not to broadly market it, it's a, it's a very small amount. We've built self-storage facilities, there's hundreds of units in those. The intent is, we didn't, we built over 1,500 homes within Hidden Lake, we didn't build Better Court, we didn't build Thrush Me's. If somebody from Better Court decides they want to rent it, I'm not going to stop them. But somebody that lives on Herman Road is not going to cross all the way through town when there's an extra space here and another storage here that are a lot more practical and make more sense. So that, that's the intent.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just, you know, throwing out a hypothetical. If you, if you've only rented half of your storage spaces, and it's been a year or two years, and now you have other people who are interested that are in other parts of the town...
I, I hear you, but it's just not practical.
Would you entertain them renting those spaces?
I don't know why they would. If somebody that lives on Cousins...
But that's not my question.
Would I entertain it if they came to me and said it? I, I don't think there's any reason I wouldn't, but I wouldn't go out broadly advertise it and put a sign up.
That's basically, that's what my question is, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions from the public? Motion that we close, close the public portion?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any conditions we want to...
The only things I heard is potential conditions, one had to do specifically, you know, no, you know, electric bikes or lithium batteries be stored, and the issue about a motion sensor light on that one end of the building, whether the board is, is in conversation pro and con, so those were, and, and, you know, and then obviously working with CME to make sure that, that the landscaping plan is not going to be, you know, destroyed by deer.
Right.
But those were the only things that I jotted down.
Jim, but the land...
Similar with Mr. Bigga Board members. I think it's important to note that the applicant did agree to comply with the CME report.
Right.
And the landscaping revision, in particular, will be subject, like I mentioned, subject to the due approval of the board, X, Y, R, Mr. Bigga, remember, that the applicant did agree to comply, tree removal, whatever. The CME report does set forth additional planning revisions and items that need to be provided, grading plan, I think we talked about, about stormwater management, documentation, With regard to lighting, CME report requires that, that we had this comment, that we request from the public, which I believe the applicant agreed to accommodate, so that should be reflected on any revised lighting plan. There's a question I have, do you want to have texted, incorporated, the texted provision?
Do we want to have what? I'm sorry, I didn't understand, Tom, we didn't understand you.
The text, lighting.
Uh, that's not something we, that's not something...
You don't believe in...
Yeah, that's not something we ordinarily do, I mean, I mean...
Was there a developer's agreement that was entered into after the original approval?
No.
No? Okay.
No. And, and now the board, the board hasn't decided yet what, what they want to do with the light on, on the end of the building. That's really, you know, it's, it's not shown, the applicant can say they'd like to do it, and ask us if they can do it, or they can just leave it up to the board, you know, so I mean, you know, the, it's not shown, someone asked for it, there's been the conversation, well, somebody else might not like it, so that's still up in the air, so the board has to decide.
I don't think it's up in the air.
Yeah, is it, was it decided that we definitely want it?
I thought Mr. Kaplan said that he was going to put it on, and if it, we got a lot of complaints, it would come off.
Correct, that's, that's what we'd agree to do. If the board sees another way, or doesn't want to do it, I'm subject to the board's approval.
The proposal is that there'll be, that there will be a motion-activated light at the end of the, one end of the building?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's how I heard it.
And he was, he said he was going to, he said you're going to provide readings for the lighting, right? You're going to give footcattle readings?
Yes.
Provide that? Okay, so, I think we're good, right?
The applicant obviously will take, you know, the required governmental approval.
Right.
He has to keep his depth growth on this.
Right.
You know, those are the form, conditions that attach to all people that have been done for issue to applicant. I, I just want to note for the record, too, that any approval that this board has raised tomorrow, tonight, won't affect or specifically won't, then the prior approvals that were discussed as memorialized, I think in 2015 regarding the conversion of the house.
Right.
This, what's happening tonight, there's nothing to do with that.
Okay. That makes sense.
Make a motion?
We're good? Yes. So if I could have a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion that we vote on the application based on compliance with the provisions in the CME report, working with CME and the township planner to make sure what was discussed tonight is implemented, and the verbal agreements made tonight in the meeting.
Okay, so that's a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call. Who's second?
Who's second?
That was Howie.
Mr. Malanson?
Yes.
I'm going to just repeat that, because my mic wasn't on. Mr. Malanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Ms. Malvoe?
Yes.
Ms. Malvoe?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Ms. DiCandia?
Yes.
Okay.
Appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, take care. Okay.
Will it reopen to the public?
So we need a motion to open to the public for any general questions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get a so moved in a second or anything?
Yes, a second.
Oh, okay.
Tom, do we need, do we need to maintain the applicant's exhibits? Oh, we have them all elect, we have those four exhibits electronically? Okay, take them away.
Adorn?
So we, we opened, we opened and closed to the general public, did you get that?
Motion, we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
Hold on.